Welcome, everybody, to a special meeting of the Bike Walk Commission. We've got one main thing on the agenda, but before that, we have. So we have actually several new people here today. Joni, actually, who just joined is is one of them as well as Phil and Peter, or at least Peter's new relative to the last few years. Kyle is new and Vanessa is new. Vanessa is our special guest tonight. Vanessa, I think I'll save you for last because you're the next one on the agenda. So we'll go for everybody else. Kyle, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure, I am the traffic analyst for the TMP department. I work under Jim and Garrett who are here. I work with Tanner a lot, too. That's about it. I'm filling in for Greg tonight. So me, Garrett and Jim all are, but yeah.
Glad you're here, Kyle. Jim, you're very familiar to most of us, but since you don't often join these meetings, do you want to introduce yourself quick?
Sure, I'm Jim Travers, Director of TMP. And really, it's Kyle that's running the meeting tonight.
And I suppose Garrett is just as as new of a face as Jim is, Garrett?
Yeah, yeah, we joined at about the same time. So Garrett Ballala, Assistant Director, Transportation, Mobility and Parking. And it's really great to see that this group continues to grow and grow, and I see a lot of new faces every time I join up. So it's really exciting for the city.
Thanks, Garrett. Peter, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm Peter Franz, and at least Colin remembers me. So thanks for that. I was a one-time Commissioner for the Bike Walk Commission. And I'm a Norwalk resident who just simply shares a deep interest in all things cycling and and road safety. And Tanner and I share a mixed love hate of city bike riding in New York City. So we have that experience as well. But that's me. Thanks.
In fact, Peter's got a leg up on me. Peter bikes all the way from Grand Central down to the Financial District, which is impressive. It's about twice as far as I like. So next, as far as new, new people, we have Phil. Phil, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody. Sorry, I lost my voice a little bit on a Saturday night. Phil Kia here, I, Norwalk resident, I live in the Wolford area. Always ride on my bike, walking, hiking, everything pedestrian related. And yeah, I figured it might be good to hear on the developments you guys are working on and maybe get involved.
Thanks, Phil. Joni, I think is our last new person besides Vanessa. Joni, do you want to introduce yourself quick?
Yeah, sure. Hi, I'm Joni Taylor. I live actually in Westport, and I'm newly interested in getting involved in making the Westport streets safer. And I think Norwalk is doing a lot of really impressive, amazing things, and I'm excited to hear what Tanner learned at the seminar.
Thanks, Joni. So I'll give Vanessa a little bit of an introduction. Vanessa is the Principal Engineer for the Department of Public Works. Vanessa and I attended a couple of weeks ago two-day seminar at Harvard taught by Jeff Speck entitled The Walkable City. Vanessa, what else do you want to say about yourself?
Well, I think you covered most of it. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. First, you invited me for the course. At the beginning, I thought that would be very long days, to be honest, but when very, very smooth, was very entertaining, was nice to see that there were people from all over, not only all over the US, but also from different parts of the world there. So I want to thank you for the opportunity and also thank you for inviting me to come here and share what we heard there with you guys.
Well, the pleasure is most definitely ours, Vanessa. We're very glad you're here. And without further ado, I think I'll dive right in. Vanessa and I have put together some slides. Most of them have pictures. I missed a few. I'm sorry, but you know, you do what you can. So I'm going to go ahead and start this and see if I can share it easily with Zoom. Is it? Is it a? Is there a bunch of black space above and below? Is it just the slide?
A bunch of black spaces up and down.
Okay. Maybe if I do that. Is that better?
Yeah, now it is perfect.
Okay. Cool. Sorry, let me see if I can present with speaker notes because I wrote some speaker notes. Well, I don't have speaker notes. Let me duplicate the tab. Hold up. Okay. So like I said, we attended a two-day class taught by Jeff Speck. If you haven't heard of Jeff Speck, he wrote the book Walkable City. And then followed it up with this book called Walkable City Rules. That's out of focus. Sorry. He's basically, he's a trained as an architect, turned city planner, and written down everything that the urban planning profession has has gathered over the last 20 or so years when it comes to how to build cities that are more conducive to walk. So Vanessa.
Sure. So and so they did that, Tanner and I decided to bring you today, pretty much just to share what was the shooting, right? So we are just trying to include lines and really do a summary of what we talk for two days. And also, we hope that some of the pictures that we included in the slides and what we talk about is you guys can have a big website view about what it was. And we are happy to answer any questions at the end, or you know, you can guys also interrupt if you wanted. So the way that he started was really seeing what are the true arguments, right, to have a walkable city? So for walkability, what do we need? And so there are other things that really is the most, these are the things that are really key to improve walkability, right? So there is the economic portion, the environmental, the biological, that is also health, equity and community. And then we're gonna develop a little bit on each one as we move forward.
So, oh, this one's yours, Vanessa. Go ahead.
Yeah, so. So what walkable city brings on the economic aspect of it, right? So one thing that really happens is that we're gonna increase property damage, right? And so it's a lot of studies show that real state that is close to a walkable area or have sidewalks in front of it has a much higher value than the same type of real state on a block that doesn't, is not very walkable around. A good example of that is also with retail spaces and office. So that is also is not only for residential, but also for business development. Another thing related to economics is that nowadays, all the millennials, right, they value a lot of walkability. And they ended up choosing first where they want to leave and then after the work. So with that, if you have a walkable area, you're probably going to be able to attract more talent because they get the millennials, because they're going to be choosing first where they live and afterward they're gonna work. Another thing is that if you invest in walkability as a city, right, or as a state, you ended up creating better jobs. So because of what I just explained before, you ended up attracting more of that talent. And usually, the most talented people are the ones that are gonna end up. Wow, that's, did you just put that in? Well, that's magic from Tanner, okay? So you ended up kind of creating the job, getting the people that are more talented and ended up with a higher GDP. Another thing that is important is that you, if you are dependent of a car, it is expensive, but not expensive only for the person, but also for the society. So if you think about it, we pretty much decide, right, everything related to walkability. So just to put some numbers, if you spend a dollar walking for the society itself, it is paying off one cent for each dollar that one person spent. And if the same person spent a dollar for driving, the society is putting up nine point twenty dollars for that same dollar that the person would be using walking. So as you can see, it's almost a hundred times the cost for the society between walking and being based on cars. And and why the number is big is because when you have the car, you have to also install all the infrastructure that are the roadways and all that. So those are pretty much the four main reasons for where the economics plays a big value on the argument for a good walkability. So the next one is environmental.
Yeah, thanks, Vanessa. So basically, a few decades ago, when when we started to really look at climate change and how to how to impact climate change, how to advocate for the environment, we thought in terms of the map on the left here. And the app on the left is greenhouse gas emissions per census block. So each each shaded area is a census block, and the census blocks that emit more greenhouse gases, mostly CO2, are darker. And what's obvious is that the city here, this is Chicago, and the and the suburbs of Chicago, that the city is producing the most greenhouse gases. That's that's like the obvious message of this map, right? And that was the conventional wisdom is that like, if you could get out of the city, that you could be more environmental, right? If you could go live in the suburbs, if you could surround yourself with trees, live among the green space, that that was the most environment environmentally friendly thing to do. And that was kind of the prevailing wisdom. What we figured out more recently, somebody figured out that it was, it made much more sense to look at not the greenhouse gases per area or per census block, but per capita, right? Because there are many more people in cities. And so if it's just a question of like, how, where should we put our people, you know, where should we encourage people to live? Then you want to think in terms of, you know, per person instead of per area. And as soon as you do that, the map flips to what you see on the right. And you can see that per person, cities are actually way, way more efficient in terms of greenhouse gas emissions than suburban areas or rural areas. And it's just such a stark difference. This one, I think, is intuitive to a lot of us today. You know, the environmental argument for walkability, if you can if you can give people a place to live where they don't have to get in a car to go everywhere, then their carbon footprint's going to be much lower. And this is true even after we we get to electric vehicles, right? Because even here in the in the Northeast are the electricity that we would use to charge our electric vehicles is still about half coal powered. And it depends on where you live, right? Some places are better than others. But on top of that, you know, even if you're driving an electric vehicle that's powered by completely clean energy, you still have a lot of emissions. There's all the environmental impact of the the rare earth minerals you have to mine for the batteries. And then there's the the pollution that's created by the brake pads deteriorating and the tires deteriorating, actually, the microplastics that come from tires and tire wear is a huge source and one until, I think, research that was published just a year or two ago. It was not understood how massive of an impact we're having on the world's water, essentially, the oceans with all of the tire, the particulate matter that's coming from tire wear from cars. And that's that's just as much a problem with an electric vehicle as it is a normal gas power vehicle. There's also, you know, in terms of environmental impacts of places that are built around cars, you have like noise pollution, right? If any of you live next to, say, I-95, you know that it's noisy. And we'll get to the epidemiological next. Actually, I'll just go there right now. There's a huge public health impact of places that are built around cars as opposed to places that are built that enable people to walk. This stat on the left actually was presented in the class that we attended, and it blew my mind. I'd never seen this. This is like the the rare, like naturally occurring, completely randomized experiment. As you can see here in the screenshot, basically, invasion. Phil, do you mind muting? I think you got a lot of background noise.
I'm sorry. Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks. Thanks, Phil. Yeah, so in in Beijing, because it's such a huge city and they have limited space, you have to basically enter a lottery to get a car, to get permission or a license to to own and drive a car. And so because that lottery is essentially awarded at random, there was a study done that looked at the people who won that lottery versus lost it. And the people over 50 who entered that lottery, they were likely to be 22 pounds heavier after five years if they won that car lottery, basically, if they were able to drive a car versus if they weren't. And of course, because it's randomized, this is controlling for every other variable. So that's just wild. The the impact that just like walking regularly versus, you know, having the option to drive has a huge impact on on your own health. There's also the obvious public health impact of of crashes, right, of traffic incidents that that kill people and that cause a lot more casualties, right? On the right here is a graph of road traffic deaths in rich countries with the US at the top. And on the right, that that light blue line is the rate in 2000. And the one on the left is 2013. So you can see that in every country, the rate of road traffic deaths did drop over those 13 years. But it didn't drop nearly as much in the United States as a lot of other countries. And even though we were on par with some of the countries back in 2000, we are no longer on par with any of these countries. And when I say no longer, that was in 2013, and I think that this this pattern has continued. And this is this is due in large part to, you know, a lot of the other countries on this list, mostly European countries, investing a lot in in their cities, especially in their city centers, making them places where people are protected from from traffic violence, where people don't need to use a car and where there are just fewer cars on the road and where the cars that are on the road are going slower. And we'll get into in just a second. We'll get into the strategies for how that works. Vanessa, I think this one is yours.
So for me, to be honest, the equity was something that I wasn't thinking about before related to walkability. So for me, this was like an eye opener, to be honest. So one third of the Americans can drive. So what happened is that this creates a burden on the others, right? Or or somebody else who has to drive that one third of the population, or they ended up staying home if they cannot walk, right? If there's particularly, if you think about the countryside and some of the suburbs where there is no way to walk. And so usually, who are this one third of the population? Most of them that get affected by it is the elderly, right? But the elderly ended up losing a lot of the independence much earlier because usually you can cut about almost 10 years of their life because if you ended up, when you're getting older, stop driving before you stop kind of walk, right? So there's some type of independence that everyone ended up losing. And the children, right? Because it is exactly the opposite. They cannot gain any independence until they are 16, if they just need to drive. So that add a burden on the parents, right? All those papa moms and dads that have to drive the kids everywhere, and they cannot get to practice on their own and all that. And also, the transit serves disproportionately the poor and the minority. So two thirds of the riders of the mass transportation usually make less than $50,000 a year. So what what does that mean? Means that although we invest most of our money in infrastructure, on the roadway infrastructure, who is really benefiting of that is the person that can buy a car, and that is usually the people that have most income. So the minorities are usually the ones that cannot use that. And so also because of that, and that's what exactly what that left graph is showing, so walking on bicycle to work by household income. So you can see that people that ended up walking or riding a bicycle to work is usually the people with less income. The people that will make more money, they ended up buying a car and driving to work. Now, because of that, usually, the poor, the elderly and the non-white are the pedestrians, and they are the ones that are most killed in any traffic-related accident. And that's what this other chart shows. So it starts from increasing, you see that a blue line that cross the people there, that's the average of the population. And then you can see that the minorities are the ones that are more in danger to be killed in traffic. And another thing that the walkability actually improves is people that has some type of aid, right? So if you think about it, a person that has a hearing aid or a visual aid, more particularly, the visual aid or a person on a wheelchair, it's much easier for them to get around walking than by car. So the other one is community. So what happened is that on this graphic, what it shows is that you have identical streets, right? And this is really kind of a very similar street. There was another study with the only difference is the number of cars that there are on these streets. But it is pretty much the same amount of people living on those blocks, but the difference, the difference is the amount of cars. So what they did this study that they realized that when you have what they call a heavy traffic, that is the one on the left side, the interactions between the neighbors are much less because you ended up just going from your house, you get into the car, you go to work or you go somewhere else, and sometimes you barely see your neighbor, right? You wave to the one right next to you and that's it. So usually, they did a, on the study, they showed that on a heavy traffic pattern, you ended up having a equivalent to a point nine friend on your street. On the light traffic one that is all the way, the blue one, where there is many less cars, as you can see, you ended up interacting with all your neighbors much, much more. So what does that interaction mean? It means that first, you trust more your neighbors. So usually, just to compare numbers, to remember, I said on the heavy traffic street, that average resident will have a point nine friend. On the light traffic one, usually will have three friends on that street. So it's a little more than triple. So also, this type of population will have more trust on their neighbors because of course, you know your neighbors who ended up trusting them more. You ended up participating in more community projects in charities and also you volunteer for sure and clubs. So in other words, improve the whole community of the area.
Thanks. If I can add this really quick, Vanessa, it's, I think, I, when I came to this class, I had seen this graph before because I think it's in his book. But I hadn't ever noticed this second symbol on here where people gather, like, it's pretty intuitive that, you know, if if you live on a quiet street, that it's easier to cross the street, right? But also, you'll see that people gather outside much more often on a street with light traffic than they do with heavy traffic, right? It's just not pleasant. And I think that's kind of pretty intuitive to all of us. But I I think the reason that Jeff brings this up is because it's historically, it's just not been taken into account when doing street design, when doing like traffic engineering, right? Because it's, it requires, you know, some some interdisciplinary expertise, interdisciplinary thinking. And that's like kind of what the the whole point of this course is, right, is to to take everything into account when you design your street. So these are the five arguments. I'll I'll back up here. Oops. Just to summarize, the five arguments for walkability, we have the economic argument, we have the environmental argument, the epidemiological or public health argument, the equity argument and the community argument. In other words, there are lots of reasons to to build a city that is more walkable. The the second half of the course focused on how do we do that? And the answer can be divided into these four categories. In order for people to walk, you need to make sure that their walk is useful, that it's safe, that it's comfortable, and it's interesting. And we're going to focus most on the safe because that's, I think, where where the city, especially Public Works and Transportation, can have the most impact. Interesting, I think, falls, interesting, useful, kind of falls more in the the planning and zoning area, but it's still useful to understand. So I'm going to start with the useful walk. So there, the useful walk, in other words, means like a practical walk, like how, in order for people to walk, especially for for purposes other than recreation, they need to have something to walk to. So the these four bullet points here are kind of Jeff's four four steps to making a useful walk. The first is to mix the uses. That means making sure that the land you have around you is not just dedicated to a single use. On the left here, we have kind of a pretty traditional, I say traditional, it's kind of the the planning paradigm that dominated the the 70s, 80s, 90s, 2000s, and still some in a lot of places even today, a lot of new places in the United States are being laid out like this, where you can see that the the different land uses are separated by this this big road in the middle, you know, that probably carries a lot of cars. And you know, if you if you live in this housing over here and you want to get to the school, then you have to cross this big this big road and probably walk along it for a while. Another thing that is a little less obvious, but happens in practice a lot, is that like to get from from, you know, let's say you come out the door here on the retail, you want to get over here, there's a fence in the way. And so if you're a pedestrian, you have to walk all the way up the busy road and around. I actually did this the other day in Fairfield. I was trying to walk across Fairfield, and I had the same issue. I tried to cut through a parking lot, and there's a fence in the way. Contrast that with what you see on the right, which is kind of a more traditional, you know, pre-pre-automobile city where you have like a main square. And this might be a little more, you know, this might remind you a little more of South Norwalk. And actually, to drive the point home, I I took these two screenshots. On the right here is South Norwalk, centered on Monroe Street and Main, South Main. And then on the left here, can anybody guess where that is in the city? Somebody want to put their hand up? Anybody know? I'll give you a hint. At the top in the middle there, that's a stop and shop.
Yeah, that's that's the main main avenue, stop and shop, Merritt Parkway.
Yep, Merritt Parkway is right up here. So we we see like a classic, a perfect textbook example of of kind of what the diagram on the previous slide was trying to illustrate. We have our single-family housing here. We have our multifamily housing down in the bottom right. I don't know if you can, can you all see my cursor or no? Yes, okay, cool. So this right here is an office building with a parking deck below it. This is a Midas. That's where I take my car to have it serviced. You've got some retail over here. I think this used to be a high school, if I'm not mistaken. I think it isn't anymore, though. And then, you know, some other offices. But in order, if you wanted to walk from this house right here to this stop and shop right here, like, it's a, it's within spitting distance, but you have to walk all the way around and down this hill, and there's probably no sidewalk. Maybe there is. I'm not sure. I haven't been up there in a while. And then this is a busy street, and it's just not a very good, very good experience. Whereas over here, let's say you live, you know, there's in this, in this photo, in this screenshot on the right, there are some single-family homes, even though this is like the urban core, a lot of multifamily homes, but like these, for example, on Haviland Street, just a block away from Washington Street, there's still single-family homes here. But if you wanted to walk to the grocery store right here at at Sea Town, like, it's it's very direct. You have to only go a tiny bit out of your way here at the very top. And you got your train station, you got your park, you got a lot of churches down here on the bottom half of the the image. My point is that the mixes are, the uses are mixed much better. And because of the street grid, it is much more direct to get to wherever you're going than on the left here. Jeff describes this left, the the way the streets are laid out in this left image is kind of what he calls dendritic, which means it branches, and there's no, the connections don't get made as much. Whereas with the with the street grid, you have connections all over the place. That's, you might think of that as a porous network instead of a dendritic network. So one of the, one of the things, the takeaways that I got as far as Norwalk is that in in those places where we have a dendritic network, if we can make pedestrian connections between, for example, you know, the the cul-de-sac, in in some places, obviously, it's not going to be feasible. Like here, there's a huge hill, right? But in places where there is an obvious pedestrian connection in an otherwise terminating street grid or street network, and that's a, that's an opportunity to provide a more porous sidewalk or or walking network. I'm, I need to go a little faster here, otherwise we're going to run out of time. Other ways to to mix the uses is to make schools smaller and more local, which we're doing in South Norwalk with the new school. It's going to happen. Also doing the same thing with parks, eliminating single-use zoning. A lot of the reason that this image on the left exists is because of zoning codes. And kind of shifting the paradigm with zoning codes entirely away from regulating the use of buildings to regulating the form of buildings. This is a concept that actually Colin introduced me to, the idea of a form-based code. And I would love to know, I'm not actually sure whether the the zoning rewrite that's happening is going to include much of that or not, but I hope it does. In in terms of putting cars in their place, there's a lot to do here. I'll just run through a few high points that I wrote down. I talked about the porous street network. He talked about pedestrian streets, the the idea of pedestrianizing, at least, you know, on occasion, potentially more permanently, Washington Street in South Norwalk has come up before. And Jeff warns to be, to experiment with that, to be careful about it, because in a lot of places in the the 80s and 90s, cities experimented with that and didn't work. And essentially, the reason was, among others, the biggest reason was that the businesses that were on that street were were businesses, the kind of businesses that people needed a car to get to. If you have a street that is full of places, and we'll actually have a picture of it later on in the slide, I'll just jump there real quick. On the right here is Burlington, Vermont. Burlington has succeeded because of the it's a college town, there's a lot of pedestrians already, and you have storefronts, stores that that work for people who don't have a car with them. For example, restaurants and boutique clothing stores like you have here on the left, you know, stuff that For example, um, restaurants and boutique clothing stores like you have here on the left, you know, stuff that is easy for people to access by foot and then leave by foot. Uh, getting the parking right, um, basically the, the underlying principle here, if you look at this left image. Everything is separated from everything else by parking. And in the right image, there, there might still be a lot of parking, but the parking is hidden in the back. And so everything in terms of where the parking is oriented toward the street and to the, the buildings that they serve. Um, it's, it's in the back and so the buildings are very accessible to pedestrians as opposed to, you know, hidden behind a lot of parking like there in the left image. Another idea um, that uh might, that might be able to be pursued in Norwalk, but uh would require, you know, some, some investigation is the idea. Of dieting a four lane road down to a three lane road. Uh, Jeff explained that this is, this almost always works because the traffic volume that can be served. With a three lane road, essentially one lane in each direction plus a turn lane is almost the same as a four lane road and eliminates a lot of. Lot of conflict points um, and making the road safer in the process and also creating more room for things like wider sidewalks and bike lanes. Um, the last thing is letting transit work. Um, since we're not the transit uh commission, um, I will skip this, but uh. Uh, suffice to say that uh, the more you can integrate transit, basically anybody who gets off of transit is a pedestrian. Um, and any transit that it's available for people to use is an alternative for them to, to own and drive a car. Um, so I'll turn it back to Vanessa for the safe walk.
Okay, so to have the safe walk, pretty much we have uh two portions. One is to protect the pedestrian and the other will be to welcome bikes. So that is would be what they consider the safe walk. So what will be, how we can protect the pedestrian, right? So really one of the main things is really to focus on speed. So it is really to minimize the speed. On. Okay, sorry about that. I was trying to follow what was on the, what this slide changed. So, so the relationship between speed and danger is really exponential, right? So particularly um, between the, a difference between the twenty miles per hour and forty miles per hour. So if you get hit by a car thirty miles per hour. Um, it is three times worse than if you were hit by a car twenty-five miles per hour. So one of the key things that needs to be done to protect the pedestrians really to reduce the speed. So another thing that he brought up many times is at least, and you know, to reduce the speed is not only put a, a sign and settle the speed on this road at twenty-five miles per hour. It's really to create um, a couple of things on the road to make sure that that speed will be low. Because it doesn't matter really what that sign will say. People try to go always a little bit above whatever is on the sign. Um, so one thing that is important to consider that he said is really on what he calls the downtown area of a city. That in our case, we have a couple of demos that we have few downtown routes. Is to reduce even more um, within a couple of blocks that's the limit. So let's say if you're coming through a certain avenue, when you get to that really downtown of that urban core. Within those blocks that uh, speed should be reduced even further. Um, remember that also reduce speed. A lot of people think that will affect what is uh, the congestion, right? Because now you have to go slow and people ended up complaining more about traffic. But there was a study showing that even though you can slow down for a few blocks, when you're very close to downtown. Um, the time that will add to your whole commute is not as much. Um, also uh, as a city, you, we should adopt division zero. We do that already here in, in Norfolk. We're considering that. So what does, what is that for those that is, does not know is try to eliminate any traffic fatality, okay? Um, then there is what they call a road diet, that is what um, Tanner tried. Um, said that with something that we can try. So pretty much is look at what we have as roadways and try to reduce. So can be reduction of the lane, reduction of the number of lane. Um, and also sometimes change um, the multi-lane. Um, way. So sometimes you'll have a one-way road with three um lanes. And maybe if you do a two-way road with only one lane on each, that will automatically reduce a lot of the speed. But people tend to go faster when they have uh, one way and a couple of lanes, more than two. So if you have just one lane to go, people cannot jog in and out and then that automatically reduces the speed. So that is all on speeding. Another thing that is very good to protect the pedestrian is really use a lot of parallel parking. The parallel parking ended up being a protection of the sidewalk. So if you have the cars parked along the curb. Um, or if you have like a bike lane between the parking and the sidewalk, that will also work as a, a protection to the pedestrian. And of course, do a lot of curb extensions bump out where you reduce the area of crosswalk. So in this picture that we're seeing on the top, right? Um, of course, look how many lanes this poor family has to cross to try to get to the other side of the street. There is no crosswalk. You can, you can see that nothing is nearby. But sometimes what you can do is try to reduce some of those lanes to some bump outs and then the length that a pedestrian is supposed to require. So that's for the, the safe walk. Um, so the other point on the other slide, Tanner. It is as part of the safe walk, we should be able to try to welcome bikes. So how we, we welcome bikes, right? The main important thing that we need to welcome bikes is really to invest on it. So. The biking population is really uh primarily function of a biking investment. So in people that are the known bikers that usually sometimes are against having bikes. The argument that needs to be used to convince them are those five that we started the meeting about. So we have to go back to those five arguments. So although they may not like the bikes, they are in support of economics, equity, health and all that. So that's really the reason where you can have everybody on the same um. Size and really put the money. But the investment is very necessary and why that is necessary? Because for you to really be able to welcome bikes, you need to have a very good network for the bikes to, to be able to get to the places that they want. So you put a bike lane in only one road, you're not going to be able to see that biking population coming. There's no one will really go to work if they can only bike in one road and, and although if they need to get to three miles of road to get to work. So that's why the whole network needs to be uh able to be built. Um, so and of course, when you build that, you have to do the right work, right? So how do you do that? It's with protect bike lanes. So what does that mean? The first one is that a bike lane ideally should have a five feet and another three feet buffer. That would be ideal. Unfortunately, we do not have that much space to be able to take it. Sometimes you take one lane and that is ten to twelve foot length. Usually um, a roadway, it will be between ten to twelve foot on, on the road. And if you say, if you want to do a bike lane on each side, you're going to need five plus three for the buffer, then five plus, plus three. Eight times two sixteen and we are just giving up on one lane. So one way that he has suggested that some communities have adopted is to do a two-lane uh. Bike lane. What does that mean? Is that as the road, you're going to have. The, and usually that will go on the last side of the road. So let's say uh, we don't have a specific picture for that here. But um, if you're looking at this picture at the bottom, imagine that the last lane, there would be a. Who have the bike lane with two ways and then the buffer. So that with that, we can reduce a little bit. So you have each lane as a three point five width. So each one will be seven plus a three foot buffer. So you're, you just need to ten and a half. So.
There's an example for you.
This one, that is a small picture. Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, that will be your two-way. And as you can see, uh, looking, let's say north will be always on the last side of the road. Because who is going north is protected better from the traffic because we're going against the traffic so the cars can see you better. Um, another thing is of course you need the buffer, you need the, you need a bike network and also at the intersections. You need to have uh, the bike box and then the bike cross and should have a protect bike lanes. And one thing that he emphasized a lot is that we should avoid charols. And charols really don't improve safety. It, it has been shown that it's actually more dangerous to have charols on, on the road than to not have it. If you, if you want to just do not mark the charols, um, there are less accidents than when you have charols. So I think that's what we have. Uh, oh, and just go back then. I, I just want to mention about the, the picture on the right. So this is uh, another thing that is coming now. Um, of course, there is spaces, this is ideally if we have the right of way where the bike lane is behind the curb. Um, so in that case, the curb originally was where you finished the sidewalk and they were able to move. Um, the curb all the way up and then you have the bike lane very, very protective is off the road. And you still have the parallel parking, so you don't have any issues and it, uh, so this would be like the dream come true of a protect bike lane. So maybe we'll find a place uh, you know, that is being developed and then we can go for that.
And if I can.
We ended in, in, we actually ended up visiting uh, one of the places where they put that there.
Yeah, I, I was about to say the same thing. Um, the, the picture on the right here, this is not a foreign country. This is Massachusetts. Which you might argue is a foreign country. Um, but you can't argue, New Haven actually is starting to do this as well. That New Haven's latest bike lane project had curb level bike lanes just like this. Um, and it is not far away at all. And if you notice like the, the area in this photo, this is not like downtown Manhattan, right? This is, this is a pretty gentle, like, you know, two or three story housing on, on both sides. It admittedly, it is a pretty wide street and we don't have a lot of those in Norwalk, but in places where we do, I, you know, I think that uh, this is, this is pretty feasible. Um, if we can, you know, get, get the, the road space and, and the money to do it. So um, moving on, um, we've got uh, the comfortable and interesting walks. And I, I combine these two because like I said, um, it's not as much uh, related to the purview of uh, of DPW or TNP. Um, but it's still important to, to understand if we want to make Norwalk a walkable place. Um, shaping the spaces, this is an interesting that I think I went to a lot. Um, like I said, Jeff was originally trained as an architect. And so um, he comes at this from, from a very architectural point of view. If you notice, if you look at the, the space on the right here, this is like I said, it's in Burlington, Vermont. The, the space is shaped very nicely and it, it feels good to exist in. One thing that he pointed out is that uh, uh, modern architecture does uh, typically tend to focus on, on buildings kind of. Independent of their context or, or surrounded by empty space and modern architecture can look really good, but it typically doesn't exist. In, you know, in like an uninterrupted storefront like, like we have here. Whereas traditional architecture usually focused more, especially traditional city planning, focus more on, on the shape of the public space itself as opposed to a building. Um, I should have put this on the slide, but if you look at like a, an aerial image of uh. Uh, he showed Florence, Italy, for example, because it's a very stark example. Um, you have these uh, the, the roads and the piazzas, the streets, I should say. That have, you know, very well-defined areas and when you're in them, they look kind of like this where you can, you're in a space that feels like it's at a human scale. Um, whereas if you're in a city that, that has more modern architecture, more modern city planning, um, there's lots of open space. Uh, you have buildings that are set back from the street um, by quite a bit. Uh, maybe because they have parking around them, maybe because they have, you know, a grassy lawn around them. Um, and as a result, it feels much more open, but it doesn't feel as human scale. It feels like you're existing in, in this massive space where you're just a tiny little person. Um, whereas um, in, in a space like this, the shape for humans, uh, it feels more natural to exist there. As far as trees go, trees have immeasurable, not immeasurable, there's lots of people measuring them, but they have um, numerous benefits, I should say. Um, I'll just run through a few of them right here. Um, trees that are planted between the sidewalk and the road right here. Offer like some protection, both, both in terms of um, actual practical protection and also perceived protection. Um, for pedestrians on the sidewalk, you know, with, with that barrier between you and the cars, you feel a lot uh safer and in practice you are, are also safer. They bring down the temperature, um, especially like in the summer and, you know, around here, it can get really hot and humid in the summer. And there's a huge difference between walking in the shade and walking in the sun, as I'm sure is very intuitive for all of you. Um, that makes it a lot more um, comfortable of an experience for, for pedestrians. Um, trees also um, suppress noise that, you know, they, they um, kind of reduce the noise pollution that comes from, from cars and from other things in the city. Um, they filter the air and uh. You know, have uh, other benefits uh as well, but it's the, you know, planting trees in the street like this has um, it like pays, pays huge dividends. Um, this last point is about making friendly, unique faces. Um, this is also a very architectural point. Um, but if you look again at this picture on the right, um, you can see that each of these buildings um, has a different facade. Um, and there are, a lot of them kind of have uh, you know, a, a style that kind of matches. Some styles are different than others. This, this one here on the left looks a little more modern. But the point is that the, there's some variety, right? You know, it's not just like one huge building on the left and one huge building on the right. Um, and that does um, tend to happen um, with, with modern um, especially apartment development where you have huge. Um, huge apartment projects that do provide a lot of housing for people and also can provide, um, you know, retail. Or, or restaurants or whatever on the, on the ground floor, enabling mixed uses. Um, but with such a massive building, it does kind of interrupts that human scale feeling that I was talking about. And Jeff taught us some, some ways around that, essentially where you can take. Um, a big building and you can divide up the facade so that it looks like. Um, it's several different facades, several different buildings and maybe there's a cohesive style um, that tends to help. But uh, even just breaking up the facade of a large building into um, these kind of independent looking facades. Um, can have a big difference in terms of the, the look and feel, the pedestrian experience of a street. So those, that's the comfortable and interesting walk. Um, just to, to recap. We've got the useful walk, which really means the practical walk. That means that people have things that they're able to walk to um, that are, you know, a walking distance away. The safe walk where they're protected from um, from hazards like cars. Um, and bikes are also protected from those hazards. Um, the comfortable walk, meaning that uh, you know, you have shade to walk in. And then the interesting walk, meaning that uh, the spaces that you're in uh, are enjoyable to be in and that they're engaging to, to people. So um, with that, uh, the last point that we wanted to make, I think this is Vanessa's. Do you want to make some point Vanessa?
Not sure, whatever you prefer. So pretty much um, the main thing is that, okay, this is great and where should we start, right? So definitely in downtown. Um, downtown with the type of the buildings that you ended up getting there is where should be the focus of the walk ability. And eventually that would grow because remember that also when the planners uh. Do a city, there are what they call kind of different transition zones. So there are some people that will choose to live in a city, but they really do not want that downtown feeling. And those are the people that will buy a house on what shows the first square on the top left. Where that person necessarily do not want the sidewalk in front of their house. And then there will be a, a second one that when you're coming a little bit closer to this downtown. Where they will start having some sidewalk where you can walk a couple of blocks there. And then you start like increasing the population, having two, three stores. And then start growing and then finalizing with the last one that is really the downtown. So this walkability should start from downtown and then um, going, let's say outside to the other zones.
So uh, with that, we have some time for questions. So I, I would love to hear questions from anybody who has questions.
Yeah, I'll jump in Tanner. I've got a question for um, for Vanessa. One of the things that I've learned in my reading over, over time, and I guess this kind of goes, not just specifically for Vanessa, but also. Everybody, I guess, within TNP. Uh, the, the safety uh, portion of the walk. So you have your comfortable walk, your interesting walk, your uh, your safety and um. I'm sorry, can you go back to the other one? Tanner, what was the other one? Comfortable, right? Yeah, useful, right? Um, so i- if we're connecting places, it's, it's going to be useful, especially if they're good places. But um, the safe thing, I think it's one of those words that can be misconstrued between different disciplines. So I, I, I was curious as to how you um, you felt after being at the seminar is to, is to how you'd interpret that. Because he, one of the things um. One of uh, uh, Jeff Speck's compatriots, Chuck Marone. At uh, at Strong Towns is also a civil engineer and a planner. Uh, it always talks about is the disconnect between the public definition of things and the, the engineering definition of things. So a safe sidewalk. uh definition of things and the the engineering definition of things. So a safe sidewalk to uh a a woman with a stroller might mean a completely different thing than a safe sidewalk to uh a trained engineer. And how do we mediate those two things? And get the the two sides talking. So I I'd just be interested in your, you know, what you took away in that how a a different perspective might just change the way you look at projects in the future. What, not to be too much more long-winded, but once one small example uh of that is when I walk to and from the office, which I do occasionally, um I will pass uh double curb cuts oftentimes in sidewalks in like the urban area. And um when they are very close to each other, something that's very disconcerting for a walking is having to ramp up very quickly only to ramp down again. When if it was just a flush sidewalk for a it for a little bit longer, if you had kept a a wider curb cut or something, it might be much more comfortable to somebody that was uh that is walking for transportation or pushing a stroller or in in a wheelchair mobility impaired. So that's just one example of where we could potentially do better and accommodate more people. So that that's a long question, but.
So well, I think that that is a very, very good point, you know, and I think that the good thing about it is that the mentality has changed, right? So one of the things that you're seeing now are things that were exactly made by the engineers in the past because they just look on the their way of doing things, right? And now I think that is that that we are listening to what is needed. Um that's why Tanner and I, we went to the seminar. We have a whole restructure of the city with GMP just looking at traffic, mobility and parking to see how we can improve things. So we're not anymore looking as an engineer, right? We are looking as a very um very organic and in very granular deal. Um and we are applying that on a daily basis. Unfortunately, the public do not see that as quick because we have to do the design, we have to fund, and then we have to do the project. So there is a little bit of a time elapsed until you guys gonna see the results of that. And um the existing ones, we need the funding to change. Um so all the time that DPW does a project that we touch the existing sidewalks, we upgrade them to the new standards that we have. And GMP is trying to also fund projects throughout the city to make areas that to improve all the walkability based on that. Um it's still unfortunately, as I said before, we need investment and our funds are limited. But um I'll tell you that in Norwalk, I'm very proud to say that this administration is really investing a lot on those improvements. Um and I believe that uh soon we'll be able to see that. Even when we have the new developers approaching us because we have to do a plan review and they receive comments from all the departments, including DPW and GMP, we sit down on a weekly basis and together we put our comments together to see how we can make it more walkable, that area. And I'll tell you, most of the time our comments are not very well received because we ask for things that a developer or homeowner doesn't feel that it's necessary for them to do it, right? So I feel that the other part of the coin is that cannot only come from us, but the public and the homeowner and the community has also engage on having that to be changed because it's you want that, but you don't wanna put that in front of your house. You want that, but you don't wanna spend the money to build that when you come to renovate your garage. So it is a combination, but we're trying hard to to close that gap.
Thanks, Vanessa. Um Jim or Garrett or somebody from TNP, do you wanna?
Yeah. Yeah, I would I'd love to add to that as well. So that's a really uh great question, Colin. And um one of the things the the city committed to is uh funding to do a comprehensive um complete streets plan. Uh so there's ARPA money that's been dedicated to um frame and ordinance for the city, create policies for the city, and ultimately create a design guide for the city to adopt um as part of a formal process. And that's going to, as part of that process, um the reason why Vision Zero is so successful is is because it brings all the stakeholders together. So as part of this process, it will bring all the city departments together. There'll be a comprehensive um outreach and planning um effort with uh engagement of all the city's citizens. Um so that's something that we are currently in the process of undertaking and we put out a request for proposals. And we found uh two qualified responses and we're in the process of interviewing um them within the the coming weeks, but soon we'll be able to put forward before the council a recommendation to choose a consultant to move forward with uh and then pursue this process. But this is a great uh opportunity, example of how we can bring, start to bring everyone together because um we certainly agree with you. It, you know, we really have to come up with a common definition of safety and what our streets look like. Um that has all stakeholders input into it as well.
And and Kyle, let me just follow up and get Kyle, you could just get a second. So um so I think you also talked about like, what is it safe, right? You know, and and I think, you know, really, you know, we're challenged as uh an older city, as many older cities are have that didn't have the infrastructure first and and then getting, you know, the available space that would that that we want and need to to do that, you know, but we're really what, you know, like we look at a bare minimum of five feet, but I think, you know, the most, the the more, you know, that's and that's like the bare minimum, right? That's for you and I to be able to walk side by side, right? You know, I think, you know, we're um uh Tanner was talking about before, street trees, you know, we think, you know, we filed that same thing. We actually have, you know, a list that's probably 10 times longer than that for for the benefits of of street trees. And I think when you look at um um, you know, Wilson, uh no, sorry, uh Wilton Avenue, that's what we're undertaking right now is actually filling in the tree belt with trees. And, you know, dramatically changing, go down there today to where and remember what it looked like last year, right? It dramatically changed uh to that. I think really what we wanna see is, you know, the continuation of of street trees. We wanna see the ability of having an amenity zone that's separate from the edge of the roadway. So again, it just puts you further apart. I think, agree on the issue of parallel parking, which is, you know, that that additional barrier uh that's going there. But, you know, we didn't go see Jeff. I've seen Jeff before. But uh we were hosting uh the the Wall Street redo, and I think that's a unique opportunity for us to really work together. Uh, you know, forming what it what it looks like because we have that opportunity to take some of the existing right of way and put it into the sidewalk network that creates that really environment that we that we that we really wanna see. I think, you know, we're we're really looking at how that has some type of connected, you know, and you and I have had a conversation, you know, that connected bike lane that, you know, that that really goes goes through there. So, you know, and and I think, you know, we don't wanna develop a sidewalk that's just narrow that just gets you from point A to point B, but that that level of interest uh that level, you know, that that opportunity for you to talk with your neighbor, the effort, you know, like, it should have, you know, green space where where you could walk your dog and, you know, we know that they like to go to the bathroom outside, right? So, you know, that's that's just yet another part of that that community, right? But I think the the thing that that we're looking at is uh first, we're we're wrapping up a citywide uh sidewalk inventory uh that lets us know where the existing sidewalks are and and how we do it. Um and we're doing that, you know, in in combination with Kyle being here, right? Because Kyle's our traffic analyst, right? You know, I firmly believe, you know, what is it measured, is it managed, right? So we have to find that out and, you know, we're current currently looking at that. We're currently looking at, you know, where are accidents? What's the what's the rate of accidents per per intersection? How do we get those? I I think we we look at, you know, the the design of a good sidewalk makes the pedestrian continue to walk in a straight line, right? You know, you you don't go down and at a, you know, at an intersection, you know, take a right to find a crosswalk to go and take a left and then come back. It's just simply, you know, we're like water, right? We just wanna go in that straight path. And and I think, you know, we recognize, you know, that um, you know, we're wrapping up right now of some plans for sidewalks for the whole length of our waiting. Right? And you could see tons of people walking there every day. You see paths that have just people born into, you know, people's front yards uh to to get there and and not really comfortable. I think we have a lot of those deficiencies that are citywide and, you know, Vanessa really keyed on it before, you know, it is, you know, it's a challenge that we that we work with in in a limited budget. And I think we need to, you know, have groups such as this help, you know, with the council to advocate for funding. You know, that really, you know, sets that, you know, this is a priority, right? Because if we only, if if they only hear about priority from, you know, the person who's in a vehicle that just wants to get from point A to point B, and we don't hear the equity about the, you know, that that we have it, they they're 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 um uh, you know, they're responding to what they're here. So like, I think, you know, at budget time, you guys gotta be hurt, right? There you go. But uh we'll continue to do it. I think uh Kyle, did you wanna wrap?
Yeah, I mean, Jim, you pretty much mentioned what I wanted to say, but one of the reasons Jim hired me was because what isn't uh Jim liked to say what isn't uh measured isn't uh taken into account a lot of the time. So one of my main projects is just for for safety, Colin, for the original point of your question is to figure out in a equalize all our roads and be able to say this is our top road in terms of what we need to fix. This is one of our more safer roads and we're working towards that right now. Um in order to create basically an algorithm and a data set to be allow us to prioritize projects on a individual roads road basis without needing to say this road's bigger, so that's an issue versus, but we can say these neighborhood roads are equal to bigger roads in some sort due to the um safety factor.
Thanks, Co. And I I just, I I wanna thank uh everybody at TNP for making the sidewalk audit happen. And that's actually something that that I've been uh raising as an issue since before Jim and Europe were ever hired and before Kyle was hired too. That that we needed a sidewalk audit. And at one point, we were even discussing doing it as a crowdsourced audit. Um trying to get to, you know, commission members and other members of the community to do it. And the fact that we're actually spending real money and having a consultant do it means that we're gonna have way better data, first of all, and it'll probably get done quicker. Um so I'm really, I I wanna thank you for for putting the money there. I'm really looking forward to that data coming out. We, we're a little bit over time. Um I do want to, at the very least, provide a little bit of time for uh people who are new uh to ask a question. So if if today's your first meeting, um and you have a question, now's the time.
Um, so how's everybody doing? Uh, you guys, I I think you guys got a lot of really really important ideas. It's definitely as far as the connectivity of some of the some of the things. And I was sharing with Tanner actually about um a ride to the beach all the time. And obviously, South Norwalk is a huge attraction. My girlfriend and I, we ride our bike there for dinner all the time, part of like our almost daily 14 mile loop from my house down to the beach and then from the beach by uh Vets Park, which goes right into Sono. And um one of the things that you guys mentioned were the shareroads and just riding in front of Vets Park there and going down uh First Street where Overton's is, Mr. Chubby's over there, the uh Mill Pond. It, you know, even riding on Beach Road, whatever the road is called, towards the beach on Two Lanes, it's incredibly, I I can give you guys footage if you want. It's like, it's, it really is incredibly dangerous, um especially in front of Vets Park there. I've had cars just lay the horn down behind me as we're riding over the shareroads. Like when I, you know, I point to them in the in the street, like this is literally a bike path. It's actually a regionally recognized bike path, no, no less.
Um, yeah, it's part of the NRT.
Yeah, so if, I don't know, I I and and I had a friend that came down actually this weekend on on Saturday, her and her husband. And she's not from Norwalk. She said, oh, Phil, where can we park? I said, you park at my house. They have electric scooters. They actually parked at a parking, the parking lot near the Maritime Center and rode their scooters to the beach. Their electric scooters. And I was thinking about that and I'm like, you know, when if you really look about it, putting the electric scooters over the bridge, if you're not on the sidewalk, going over the bridge, going down where Vets Park is and you're not on the sidewalk, you don't have the right of way on a on a on a bicycle or or electric scooter, you have to be in the road. Um, it's incredibly dangerous. It it really is. Um so I think, you know, what some of the ideas certainly, I think connecting the attractions in the city and the beaches is a massive attraction. I think to a lot of people. That's it. That's all.
Phil, let me get you real quick. Um we are wrapping up, but we have a final design up at Conda right now for a bike lane uh for that section that you're talking uh and that we also have plan money for uh Seaview, right? So um, you know, we'll be looking at that, but for the section coming off uh 136, uh that will have a bike lane, hopefully painted maybe uh this year. Um if not, uh, you know, we very much like it this year, but like, uh, you know, we're just waiting on Conda for the final uh approval right now. Um and so I, you ask and you shall receive, but you're yes, so.
Yeah, like right, really, yeah.
Yeah, and then and then proceed you right there. Yeah, for Seaview, we have, we have city funds for studies so that uh pretty soon we're going to uh be you be out uh for this summer with a consultant to do the design of Seaview all the way down uh past there. Uh, you know, it does get challenged, right? But it, you know, there is also things like even on a pedestrian level, right? You get down there and the sidewalk just ends, right? So like, you're you're in the midst of of things. So we we have to figure it out. But it's in the works.
Yeah, no, I I I'll continue to ride my bike no matter what. I promise you that.
Well, I want you to ride safely. I want you to get to your destination without somebody honking your.
Um, I I wanna comment on on Phil's comment um and point out something Vanessa mentioned earlier in the presentation, which was about pro- protecting uh the sidewalk with parallel parking. We also learned that that's an incredibly effective strategy for bike lanes as well. Um and just because we mentioned Seaview and because we can zoom into the the imagery right here. You know, if we if we're gonna have a row of of parking here and maybe it won't work on Seaview for bringing the bike lane in. Uh but if we can put the the bike lane between the parked cars and the sidewalk instead of between the parked cars and the road, that that increases safety quite a bit. Um there's actually, there's an opportunity to do that with with purely just with restriping in some places here on Strawberry Hill where we do, and maybe, yeah. Um here, right here on Strawberry Hill, we've got a park, a sidewalk, a parking lane, a buffer, a bike lane and then the road. And if we just, next time we restrike that, if we can flip the parking lane and the bike lane, um we have the the space to buffer because it's already buffered. But then essentially the bike lane becomes an extension of the sidewalk. And yes, I I imagine that there's issues there with with people, you know, not understanding what's going on and parking in the bike lane, which we don't want. But I think even so, it's incredibly low hanging fruit to to increase the safety of our bike network. So I wanted to call attention to that.
Yeah, I I roll down Strawberry Hill almost daily too. It's um, yeah, it's a good.
Tanner, just to be respectful of everyone's time, so we can just kind of limit to questions and comments specifically for this. Just to, I think there's just a couple of other people. We can obviously have the discussion if we have the time, but let's just try to be cognizant of everyone's time while we're here. Of more focused on the on the presentation.
Hey Tanner, Vanessa, super quick, uh not so much questions. Um uh thanks for the presentation. Two really quick points. One, um there's certainly investment is the right word uh for for some of these issues. Expense to um to initiate these, but there's savings too. There's savings in less cars on the road, in less wear on the road. That's something that people on this call know quite well. Um so that's one issue. Um you mentioned at the uh top of the presentation about um the Chinese folks who gained gained weight. Once they gained access to the car is obviously a huge health benefit that's um worth, you know, at least including in in a conversation like this that comes to a community um when more people are walking and riding. And then lastly, one quick point, um there's always people that you have to sell on this whole idea. We all know that there's a lot of people who just do not care about walking. They don't care about biking. They don't care about any of it. That's the reality of life. But the point that you'll catch them with is the fact that a lot of these initiatives will reduce speeding on the roads. And that's something everybody hates. Uh so just wanna throw those two points out as their hopefully somewhat good um sales points to include on this topic.
Yeah, that's a great point. Thanks, Peter.
Thanks, Peter. You're right, you know, um but again, even with speeding, believe it or not, I get a lot of complaints on a daily basis that people cannot move on a fast pace throughout the town. So that's why it it is hard, but I think, again, as I said before, um we are doing a lot of work behind this seems to get to the point that we all wanna be. I think that it's great that we are all on the same page now. And um the investments that we're trying to bring, we can see not only with the local administration, but with the state administration also that this became an important topic. So the other day, there was this um GMP was able to secure this grant. We're gonna be able to also expand the sidewalk on West Rock. We're going to be able to also expand the sidewalks on West Rock. You know, and that came through, uh, through the state, it's not just a city project. So I, we can see that it's coming, we're looking for the grants and I think that we're going to get there. Unfortunately, as Jim was saying, we're looking already at some of these areas that we know that is trouble. Believe we do know, and we are trying to improve, but we need to first secure the fund. We need to design, we need approval. A lot of the roads here, the hardest roads that you see the problems are not city roads. Well, uh, some of them are state roads, so we cannot go there and just do what we want. We need sometimes what we call a design exception, we need approval. And after that, we can go ahead, hire the contractor and make the change.
Thanks, Vanessa, and thanks, Peter, for the, for the comment. I'll open up to anybody now, um, regardless of whether you're here for the first time or not. Any other questions or comments? Christine, go for it.
Oh, hi, and Vanessa, Tanner, thank you so much for attending this conference. Uh, really appreciate that, Jim and your staff here and your feedback, Jim, about the importance of the budget and everything and being aware of that and cognizant as a commission. I think that's great advice for us. Um, Vanessa, you just mentioned something about the state road and then the share rows and stuff. I was on my bike the other day. I live right off Strawberry Hill County Street. There's this beautiful, I guess it's a share row that, that turns left, go to the left and then boom, you go to the left. And there's absolutely no ni- margin of anything to be on that Westport Avenue, which is a huge commerce district. And I could just envision people traveling by bicycle on that road to shop. There's so many residences in that area. So I guess that's an example of a state road, Westport Avenue, maybe, that we can't do anything. Uh, but the, the good news is there are sidewalks for the pedestrians to get to those places. But the fact that there's this bike, you know, signal, go left, and then you're literally in the lane uh, on the, and now I'm a confident rider, so I would do it, but most people would not. Thank you. Thanks again for being here.
No, thank you. And again, even on the state roads, we know that they are doing a project. We usually, most of the time, we are aware that the project is coming with, and then we try to implement that. So the good thing is that we have that in mind, that we want to try to add bike lane and make it safe for everybody on every opportunity that we.
Christine, did you have another question? Um, your hand's still up, or is that just left over? Anybody else? We have, we are over our, our scheduled time, so I, I want to be sensitive of time, but also we have a unique opportunity where a lot of people are here that aren't usually here. So if you have a question, please do ask it. Sherry, go ahead. You'll have to unmute yourself first. Sherry, don't forget to unmute yourself. We can't hear you.
Tanner, I'm, uh, sorry, there I am. It's the wrong button. I'm not trying to bring up a debate about whether these buildings should be built or not. My, my question is, are there any plans for the area around Cemetery Street? Where Webster Bank is being torn down and the new buildings may be going into place. Are there plans, are people looking at that area to make it continue or to be more walkable and more bikeable?
Yes. Yes, there are. So, um, there are two things happening there. There is one that Jim just mentioned, that we are trying to make this connectivity between Gregory Boulevard and then a Van Zandt. And then that we're looking, also there is the East Avenue, uh, project that we're trying to do a couple of changes there to be able to finish this connectivity. And on top of that, whenever the developer will come, we are also asking them, we have some ideas that we are asking him to include as part of their design. So there are three things happening at the same time. We do not have a final design approved yet, but, uh, the, both departments are working with the state and with the developers to improve that whole connectivity in there.
Thank you.
Jim, did you want to add anything? I saw that you started to comment. Jim, Jim, looks like you might be frozen. Go ahead.
Oh, oh, it's a Jim. I, I thought you said, I didn't hear you. So, so, so no, I was just going to say, I was going to say the same thing that Vanessa did, that we're both working on this together with, you know, tying in from the, the, the Walk Street project, uh, to, to, to the Walk Bridge project, rather, the, 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 uh, 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 development. But something, you know, we recognize the fact that, you know, it's challenging, uh, it has no pedestrian crossings. It has no, you know, we have a, you know, a great historic cemetery with no sidewalks around it and no way to safely get to it. Um, you know, so it's a, you know, it could be a, it could be a landmark destination, right? And, you know, we, we, but you would never know it's in there because you can't get to it. Uh, we also see Gregory Boulevard as a huge opportunity, but, you know, Van Zandt is 136 and it connects down to, to Winfield. And we want to see how do we connect, get, you know, a good connection from Van Zandt around Cemetery Park. So we're working, uh, we're, you, uh, as a team together, uh, to come up with what that is. And, you know, we, we recognize that it was in the East Newark T O D seven years ago to, 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 for, for improvements here. And, and, uh, we want to make sure that, you know, anything that happens in the area, uh, happens with some type of, you know, bike path improvement.
We have a meeting about it tomorrow.
Uh, Garrett's got his hand up. Go ahead, Garrett.
I just wanted to make, uh, one quick plug. I, I have to run a second and I apologize, but, um, Vanessa, Tanner, great presentation. And, um, when they make one shameless, uh, plug, so we can put, give everyone some homework and put this to, to action. Um, so the night that Tanner and Vanessa were attending the, the, um, the public meeting in Boston, for just back, we also had a, a public design kickoff for the Wall Street corridor improvements. Um, and at that meeting, we had a survey, which has, uh, subsequently been put on our website. So if you go to transportation mobility parking, you'll see a tab for Wall Street corridor improvements. Uh, then you'll see a link to outreach and we have put up a survey, um, that I'd love to get everyone's feedback for. Um, but it actually is, is directed towards, geared towards walkability. So you'll see a number of different images of what the potential future of Wall Street could look like. We're looking to do a really transformative project, but you get to see in inspirations of different streetscapes, um, from around the nation and the globe. And we'd love for you to participate and provide some of your impact so we can determine what exactly the walkability of that neighborhood will look like, um, how we can accommodate some of the other things and welcome bikes, uh, into the design. So I encourage everyone, when you have an opportunity, we'd love to have your feedback. It'll be on the website until July 31st. I appreciate it.
This is it, right?
Yes, yeah. If you click on that survey, it's, it's really short. It only takes five minutes. Um, we got, we had an overwhelming response at the community meeting, but we've opened it up, uh, in an online format. And you also see some social media from the city, uh, likely tomorrow for the city's transportation Tuesday, um, promoting this survey.
But Kyle, if you can get this out to, to link out to Tanner and Tanner, if you could help to get it out to the group, uh, we very much want, you know, we committed to, you know, really doing a design that was really driven by community engagement. So, you know, we really want to make sure that everyone is heard.
Well, we will make sure to share it everywhere, um, including, I'll, uh, just take this opportunity to show, we have a new link tree right here. If you go to bikenorwalk.org and we're going to have other URLs that link to it as well. But if you go to bikenorwalk.org, you get this, and I can add the link to the survey to the top of this page right here. Cause the poetic bike parking challenge is now over, so we're going to take it out. But we're, you can, you can give out, any, everybody here can give out that URL if you want, bikenorwalk.org, which redirects to the link tree right here. Um, but the, the corridor, sorry, the, the survey here looks awesome. I love all the, the photographs, um, of different streetscapes from all over the world. That's a great idea. Um, we got another hand up, Joni, go ahead.
Thank you, Tanner. And I just wanted to ask really quickly, um, and I'm sorry, I'm not on camera. Um, I mean, I could be, but I can't really figure out how. Uh, I just wanted to ask, I was reading about the new kind of opportunity to create a pedestrian safety zone, um, on state roads. So the towns, this is that new legislation. I just wanted to ask if it's something that you guys are looking up for Norwalk or also how, I'm trying to understand what it is. Is there, where can I get more information about what it actually look like? It's part of that House Bill 5255?
I, I did, what was the last part? What was it, Jody?
Sorry, um, there's the new House Bill in Connecticut that passed, uh, that in, gives towns, uh, the opportunity to kind of lower speeds on state roads if they create a pedestrian safety zone. So I think like to Vanessa's point, lowering speeds can be really helpful. Um, but it's so new, I'm having trouble figuring out how to learn more. And if that's even something I should try to advocate for, so I wanted to ask if it was on your radar screen, if you guys were thinking about it? It's a terrible idea, how I can learn more?
So, um, so there's a couple of challenges and, and I was probably one of, uh, you know, what, what, what are the, to be people who spoke against it as it, as it was coming on, uh, for, for a couple of reasons, right? Because I don't believe, as we talked about before, about putting up a, a sign uh, of a, of a lower speed limit has an impact on speed. It has to do with how we design it. So what I challenged the legislation was to come up with dollars that allows us to fix the roads to get slower speeds. Uh, that I've never, I've been doing this and I've never seen simply a sign to, uh, to change behavior. So I think we need to, we need to look at it, um, a little bit more holistically. Uh, I think that, that, you know, they, the legislation is putting some additional dollars out, uh, um, for, you know, uh, one of them being a $3.5 million earmark that, uh, Senator Duff has secured for us for the intersection of Wall, Belt and Motts, um, West, uh, which is no pedestrian connectivity, high, you know, higher accidents, really high speeds and really creates the speeding, you know, on Wall Street. So very familiar with the bill. Um, I think that, um, you know, that there probably needs to be more. There, there are some good parts of it in the bill, the, you know, the pedestrian, you know, safety zone, uh, has to follow into, into a couple of different things. I think really what we, you know, what we need to look at is how we really design our roads. I think we need to, you know, we have deficiencies in a sidewalk network, um, that we have to have that connectivity, allow people to get to and from, uh, feeling safe, uh, when, when they're doing it. Uh, it is efforts that are, you know, as Vanessa talked about before, really on the forefront of this administration. And, you know, we continue to work collaboratively, but it's the end of the day, so I'm losing my ability to speak, to, to, to try to make that happen. Um, you know, so I think, you know, there are parts of the, the bill that are good. Uh, there are parts of the bill that I don't know that has a lot of teeth behind it. Um, and, uh, and, and, you know, with, you know, but, you know, we, we continue to, to look at those opportunities. Um, you know, uh, Senator Duff, uh, we meet with on a regular basis to talk about, you know, what those opportunities we have. But, you know, um, I think we have made that commitment and certainly that commitment with hiring Kyle to really start looking at the data. All right. So that we could use the data in support of grants, use the data in support of, you know, city investments into what direction we have. And, and really only, you know, not only measuring, you know, what's not working, right? But also measuring what is working or measuring the impact of, of your, the decisions that we make, right? And making sure that the decision we make, you know, have the payoff that we, that we want it to, to do.
Thank you. That was very helpful. And, and I just want to say again how, um, much respect I have for how it seems like you guys in Norwalk are approaching this. I think there's a lot to learn, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Tanner, with that, I think we need to wrap up as we are, you know, over time and we are getting to the end of the discussion and question portion. So just to be respectful of everyone's time, I think we should, uh, just wrap up.
That's fair. Um, then I'll, I'll just end by thanking everybody, uh, for coming and for the great discussion. Um, thanks again to Vanessa for accompanying me at the conference at Harvard. I would love to see, uh, more people from the city go to this, the same, uh, seminar next summer. It's taught every summer at Harvard. Um, and there might be room in the bike walk budget to, to send more people from the city. Um, if we, if we feel like it's an impactful thing to do. Uh, but we'll cross that bridge, uh, you know, in a few months when, when we're looking at our next budget. So, uh, I think we need a motion to, to adjourn. I'll go ahead and make that motion. Do I have a second?
Tanner, you can't make the motion that you, you need to ask someone and they need to make that motion.
Oh dang.
Yeah.
I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you for the opportunity, Tanner, and thanks for the bike commission to invite me to go there. And it was a pleasure to come and talk to you guys tonight. And again, any further questions, feel free to reach out to me. Uh, I'll be honest, sometimes it takes a while for me to reach my voicemail, but email I do. Within 24 hours, usually I get back to you. Uh, but again, come, we are at City Hall. I'm here every single day. Feel free to stop by if needed, you know, if I have time, I'm happy to talk to you.
Thanks, Vanessa. Okay. With, with that, I'll kick it back to Colin to, to make the, the motion that I'm not allowed to make.
Most do adjourn.
Am I going to want a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Have a great one, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.